Is Scott coming tonight?
No.
No.
Okay, that's next week.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Harlem Township Zoning Commission Order and Ms. Aruba, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Mike Cavler.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Tom Ne.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Louis Greenwell.
Here.
Alan Jacob.
Here.
Thank you. All members are present tonight. Alan, thank you for being here as well, and please participate in our discussion. Members of the public, if anyone happens to be online, which at this point I don't see anyone.
Bob Singer is on.
Who?
Bob Singer. I'm on.
Okay, didn't see that from me.
He's on.
I saw Louis and Alan and the other one.
Yeah, Bob is the blank.
It's the R A S N V S.
There is, I can't see it from here.
Yeah.
Well, hi, Bob. So we have Bob Singer present online. We have a hearing scheduled for tonight, and we will get to that at seven forty-five. In the meantime, I will introduce Ashley Zaruba, our zoning assistant. Mike Cannon is our Director of Zoning and Development, but Mike isn't present this evening. And let's move forward. Anyone, there's no one present, so I'm assuming we don't have anyone that's going to show up that wants to submit an application, and as such, then we'll move forward to review of the minutes. We had the minutes from four fourteen previously, but I guess there were some additional comments submitted to Ashley since last, our meeting last week, and she's updated. So the copy we have now reflects all recommendations for changes you've received, correct, Ashley? Okay. Anyone that did submit some additional changes to Ashley, you may want to take a look, make sure that they're there, but I'm sure that they are, if they were submitted. Once we've reached satisfaction that these minutes reflect any revisions that were requested, then a motion to approve as amended would be appropriate.
Just want to point out one thing on near the top of page three.
Page three, okay.
There's a strikeout wanting, but it printed.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to find. Okay, thank you. Still looking at the top paragraph and reading through it. Okay. It's in the fourth paragraph. Yeah, it was strikeout, but it didn't get deleted for whatever when, when I'm sure when Ashley accepted changes for whatever reason, and that didn't go. And it should have.
Some strikeouts stay on the page. They don't become like edits. They're almost like we just drew a line through it instead of like actually editing it out. So I usually have to go back through and take off a lot of those.
I have to go back and check. Oh, okay.
Slipped through the cracks.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
A motion to approve the April fourteenth zoning commission workshop meeting minutes as corrected.
Louis moved approval of the minutes for workshop meeting on April fourteenth. And Joni seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion passed unanimously. They are approved as corrected. Then we have the minutes for April twenty-eight.
You're on page two. The third of the way down to the paragraph. That starts the commission discussed. And there's one word in red and another strikeout.
Page two?
Page two?
I'm sorry, page three.
I didn't see anything on page three. Page three. Well, I still don't see it on my copy.
Sorry, let me look at the official.
Which paragraph was it, Tom, or is it?
Yeah, it may not be anything. I was looking at what I had printed off.
Oh, I see. You were looking at a copy you printed.
I don't see anything in particular.
There's no, there's no red and there's no strikeout that I see on page three.
I make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes for the special meeting on April twenty-eighth as previously corrected.
All right, thank you, Joni. It's been moved by Joni, seconded by Brittany.
Nope, that was Louis.
I'm sorry. It sounded like it came from her.
Yeah.
That's because I had my head turned, I guess. Thank you, Louis. Moved by Joni, seconded by Louis. Any further discussion? If there are none, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Motion to approve these minutes is approved.
Question for Louis. Is it Louis or Lewis?
Either one. Depends what? If it's written with an S, then it's Lewis. Unless you want or the French pronunciation, then it would be Louis. I normally spell it with I E, which is Louis. Either way.
What is your full?
My actual name on my license is Lewis.
Ah, okay.
Or French pronunciation.
What does your mother call you?
Late for dinner.
And then I have one question. If it's appropriate, about the postponed preliminary meeting, second preliminary meeting with Scott Messer. That's rescheduled for the fourth Monday in July.
That's correct.
We, we had, originally we had requested that we get his new plan a week ahead of time. Has he been asked to do that again?
He will be. I don't know for sure if he's been asked yet or not, but I have discussed that specifically with Mike.
I did see him. He was in here today. He's doing really well.
Is he working?
He had something with his heart, so he's doing really well.
Yeah, well, that's good.
He looks great. So he's, he looks great, great. So he's going to start working on everything, and he did say that date works for him. So I can send him an email saying just to get kind of a, are you guys wanting just kind of what he's looking to do a week prior?
As a preliminary meeting, if he has a draft, what we want to do is look at the draft of the plan. It's not an application. Don't, do not submit an application telling that. We only want to see a draft of whatever the preliminary plan is going to be. That's it.
And actually, if he could get it to us like on the fourteenth at our workshop meeting, that would be even better than just.
That would, yeah, I agree. That would be a good.
They would have to come and pick it up ourselves.
If you're going to be back in touch with him, then please do that.
Yeah, I'll tell him sooner the better.
Yeah.
Yay. It's seven, we have about three or four minutes before the time to start the hearing. The other item, quickie, under old business, NEF preliminary meeting update. The update on that is I spoke with Mike today about it, and he's not heard anything additional from either Mr. NEF or from Joe Clayce. At this point, Joe was supposed, the last I knew, and Mike as well, was that Joe was following up with regional planning. And after a conversation with them, then they were going to make a decision about what to do. If they decide that they're not going to have a preliminary meeting, of course, then we would just cancel that meeting. And at this point, we'll leave, since we've just had that discussion, we'll leave the Scott Messer project for Capasio on Center Lloyd Road scheduled the way that we have it and not change it. Though potentially, we won't have a meeting on the twenty-eighth of June, but that would only happen if.
Thirtieth of June.
Thirtieth of June, sorry. The twenty-eighth is a Monday.
Saturday.
Saturday?
Twenty-eighth is a Saturday.
Okay. Well, it should be a Monday, the thirtieth.
Yes.
Those are the, we've stuck with the Mondays, the fourth Mondays, right? The twenty, the June twenty-eighth is the Monday.
No.
Right?
June twenty-eighth is a Saturday.
Where do I have it on my calendar for the twenty-eighth?
You have it for the thirtieth.
Okay.
July twenty-eighth is a Monday.
Oh, that's where I'm getting the twenty-eighth from then. We're a month ahead. Got them reversed. June thirtieth is the one for.
NEF.
Capasio or NEF. June, July twenty-eighth is the one for Capasio. I had them switched, the dates, not the meetings. Okay.
So I have a question about that. So while NEF is continuing to determine with Joe how they want to proceed with submitting something or not, the, the property owners that were here that were, were pretty vocal in their opposition, are they just still, like, do they have any, any relief at all from, from anything that he's doing?
The only relief that could be forthcoming is that I know that Mike is following up with the attorney and the prosecutor's office, and they are going to be notified that they're out of compliance.
Okay.
Again, and then they're going to, I don't know whether a court date will be set, but there'll be some kind of a letter that's going to be sent out to them.
That letter was already sent.
I'm sorry, did you?
The letter was already sent.
The letter was sent?
There was a letter.
From the prosecutor's office?
They have thirty days to comply or it'll be sent to the prosecutor.
Well, that letter was sent.
Yeah, it's the one from the question.
Is that the second letter? It's just the first letter? So the first letter was.
If they have sent letters previously to now, but I do know that Mike did send one, and they have a certain, I think it's like thirty.
Well, I know that is thirty.
Time to get back, and then it will be sent to Cory.
But they've been identified as being out of compliance by Mike for some time, but now the letter that you're referring to, was that sent by Mike or is that sent from the prosecutor's office?
Sent by Mike.
Okay. And it's another thirty, sixty, ninety days. The wheels grind extremely slow in terms of getting done.
Actual enforcement.
I thought we were a step ahead. I thought we were getting a letter from the prosecutor's office this morning. I misunderstood apparently because he was talking to me about having met or meeting again with the prosecutor's office.
So, so just scheduling a preliminary meeting with us does not impact the schedule of enforcement from the prosecutor's office at all?
No.
It did initially, but not now. Because they withdrew their application. And they haven't done any follow-up indicating, you know, as I, as I stated earlier, we've not heard anything more about what their plans are. They may be responding at this point to Mike's letter by indicating that, well, we're, we're going to have this preliminary meeting with the zoning commission, and we're going to bring that process forward. Mike's under the impression that Joe Clayce is trying to look at some other options.
Yeah, because that still doesn't make them compliant.
Yeah.
Having a meeting and maybe having a plan still doesn't limit the noise that the.
They will not get, they will not get into compliance unless we approve some zoning that allows for them to operate.
Or unless they stop using the, the property the way they're using it. I mean, that's their choices. Either stop using the, stop doing what they're doing.
Oh, true.
Way of compliance.
They can be in compliance by stop doing what they're doing, which is the violation. Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't want this delay of the preliminary meeting process to kind of give them extra time to, to work through the system, I guess, or.
Well, the prosecutor, the prosecutor is willing to have Mike go ahead and send him the letter that he sent.
Yeah, that's good.
Because that's what Mike apparently was referring to when he said the prosecutor authorized it.
Yep, all right. All right, thanks for that.
So the neighbors, I, I don't know whether they're aware that that's been sent or not, but that would be what has happened at this point. And whether or not the preliminary meeting will take place won't affect that situation unless the prosecutor takes whatever they respond to to the letter and says, okay, well then you've got another thirty days or another sixty days. But typically, if the prosecutor sends out a letter.
Fair enough.
When, once the prosecutor sends a letter, there's another thirty day wait. Unless he makes the time shorter than that.
Right.
There's always a delay. You always give the people the opportunity to correct the problem.
Right.
At this point, we'll have to wait and see what Joe decides to do. For us, we don't do anything between the property owner and the zoning inspector and the prosecutor's office. Okay. We are, yeah, we were a couple of minutes past the hearing time that was scheduled, so let's move into that or recess our regular meeting and open the hearing on find the oops, that's not it. Right here. This is application. We're going to open the hearing for application HTCC twenty five oh five for article, revision of Articles twelve, Neighborhood Office District and Article fourteen, Neighborhood Commercial District, C two. Would you please call the role or opening the hearing, Ms. Aruba?
Mike Cavler.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Tom Ne.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Louis Greenwell.
Here.
Alan Jacob.
Here.
Well, for the record, the way that the hearing will progress, we will review the application. Zoning and commission members will have the opportunity for discussion. And if there are any members of the public that wish to participate, there will be an opportunity for that to occur when the public, or I'm sorry, when the commission members have finished their initial discussion. During that time, there will not be public participation, but the public will have the opportunity to comment and or ask questions during the time when the public participation is invited. There's no one present in the room. If anyone does come, so if I miss it, someone can remind me to remind them to step up to the podium to state their name and address. If anyone online wishes to participate, the same thing will be true. Please get yourself recognized online, state your name and address so that it can be recorded. You make any comments, please be brief and be factual, and please do not bring up point or a question treated or addressed or asked. Only one person can be heard at a time, so please do not carry on your own conversation while the individual is speaking, and please do not interrupt a speaker. All right. The application was submitted on the form to amend the text of the Township Zoning Resolution, which is the form that we have specifically for that purpose. And the, it's brought to the commission at the request of the commission itself on the recommendation earlier, almost two years ago now, by the Township Trustees that we, the zoning commission, review and revise all the existing articles of the zoning resolution that we deem it to be appropriate for. So right now, we're looking at revisions in existing articles of Articles twelve, Neighborhood Office District C one, and Article fourteen, Neighborhood Commercial District C two. Okay, that introduction, I guess let's just get right to it. The zoning changes that we are discussing utilize consultation with Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, Scott Standards, and it was taken to the Regional Planning Commission for their review. Staff recommended condition approval, conditional approval of the text amendments to the Delaware, to the Harlem Township zoning resolution and to the Harlem Township Trustees, subject to adding the word district to the end of the C two title for consistency with the other zoning districts. The current draft we have does not have that word in it, so that would be one change that potentially, when we were dealing with the C two that we might want to consider. That's the recommendation from regional planning.
And Scott also mentioned it when he was here.
Yes.
Yes.
They're going to do that.
It's not in the current version that we have, but he will do that and get it back to back to, to Ashley.
Look, there was also a comment about the noise requirement that was part of C two might also be appropriate for C one.
I'm sorry.
There was, they also made a comment about the noise requirement that we added under C two. They suggested that might also be appropriate under C one. We don't have a noise standard.
There was, I didn't see that. There's a, there's a separate recommendation.
Staff comments?
Yeah.
It's not part of their conditional approval, but they did make a comment about it.
Oh, you're looking at the comments, not the conditional approval.
Correct.
Which, which I, I agree.
Yeah, I don't see why it, why we would have an issue with that. I mean, I think it's a good.
Good add.
Yeah. The letter N as in Nancy under C two, and they've been kind of suggesting that that might also be a good add to the development standards under C one.
Well, okay, so let's find it in terms of any change that we would want to make, then decide specifically where that's going to be. Let's start with, let's do number twelve first and make sure we got through that. Did anybody see anything specifically then in twelve that needs to be addressed?
Just the addition of N at the end of the, the very end of it with the noise stuff.
I also saw one thing in lot size on both articles. We have, so it reads, a minimum lot size of two acres is required unless evidence can be provided that all requirements, yada, yada, can be provided. So we say can be provided twice.
Oh, well, that's.
I know that's, I.
That's definitely a typo that should be fixed.
I think that needs to be either the first can be provided or the second can be provided, needs to be removed from both.
Well, the second can be provided should be more like can be met.
Well.
That's evidence.
Identify specifically the paragraph that you're referring to.
B.
Yeah.
B. Twelve oh six B.
And developments.
You could also remove the first can be provided, and it would read evidence that all requirements can be provided. But, but you're right, can be met.
I think met is better than provided anyway.
That's excellent.
So if we change the last word to met and is required unless evidence.
Yeah, can be provided that all requirements can be met.
Maybe instead of it saying can be provided, unless evidence is provided.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine either way. I don't know if there's.
Yeah, all requirements setbacks, building size, et cetera, et cetera.
Can be met.
Minimum lot size, that the idea is that, that all requirements can be met.
Right.
That's what we just decided.
Providing anything.
Yeah.
Right. We just decided that the last provided should be met.
Yeah.
We're going to say unless evidence is provided, that all requirements can be met.
So we're changing.
All right, so we can leave the can be provided at the first. I don't need to change it to is unless you think you want to change. It's fine either way.
I think it's good to change it to is.
I, I would support changing it to is.
Is provided that all requirements can be met. Who, who does the evidence go?
They could, so they.
With the plan.
If it says can be provided, does that mean that, well, yeah, we could provide, but we choose not to.
Right.
I think it should be is, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
And we'll make that same change in.
Unless evidence is provided. Okay. Ashley, would you make those two notes because we're going to have to get Scott to change that if we move forward, which I expect that we're going to.
And the exact same changes should be done on fourteen oh six B.
Okay, hang on a second. It's this, well, that's, that's. Same changes on fourteen. So, Pete, the first at the title, Article fourteen, we're going to insert the word district.
Yes.
To make it match, we put the word district between commercial and C two.
Yes.
Okay, and then we're going to make the same changes about can be provided. That's under B also, yeah.
Letter N, the twelve.
Unless evidence is provided, that all requirements, et cetera.
So I guess this is.
I guess isn't what I was gonna ask before.
Can be met.
So, Mike, we, we have. Um, still looking at, uh, uh, Article twelve.
Back to twelve, okay, yeah.
Okay, but on the same, um, lot size. In section twelve oh four, conditionally use, use, um, all of those changes are. Go back to the, the, the BZI. It's not the zoning inspector, it's not us, it's the BZI that, that approves those conditional uses. And I would say here under lot size, unless evidence is provided, I would insert to the township board of. Of zoning appeal.
Well, that's a new thought. That's why my assumption is it's just going to the zoning inspector.
I, I don't know where it says that, and I, I mean, that's fine.
Well, because the zoning inspector is legally responsible for.
Checking lot sizes.
Enforcing the, the zoning ordinance, zoning resolution. So it would go to the zoning inspector as a matter of course, but it, we, I'm saying that we could specify that, but I'm not.
But even, even if it's, even if it says the zoning inspector, it's provided to the zoning inspector. And if there's a, an appeal, that appeal would go to the BZI.
Appeal would go to the BZI.
Um, I would be more comfortable if it spelled out who the, this evidence goes to and who makes that decision that. Less than two acres still, is still okay. That's a big, it's a big, it's a big deal.
So big that we didn't notice it for how many times have we reviewed this?
Many times.
All right.
But that's the law of proofreading, right? You always find something, the longer you proofread, you'll always find something.
That's why we need to get it approved, so we stop looking at it. But I'm not suggesting we don't make.
If this evidence is provided that less than two acres will work. That would be a variance. Right? So it does go to the BZI.
No, not if it's specified in here that that is permissible. Minimum lot size is required unless. Evidence is provided that all requirements, and, and then setbacks, building size, et cetera, et cetera. Who reviews that? The zoning inspector. Before he issues a zoning permit. Has to review these things and issues the permit. If he doesn't issue the permit. They can't get a building permit. Well. Uh, shouldn't say they can't because sometimes things slip through, but they're not supposed to. The, the building department looks for that approval. Does it meet zoning? So that's. I mean. Same thing was true to lot size. Who makes the determination on any of these things? It's always the zoning inspector.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we have to specify. Those two, because the, the application for, application that's being, that's generating this, this permit. Goes to the inspector. Right? It's always gonna be provided to the inspector.
Right.
Anyone that's wanting to do anything. That's, that.
If they can't meet the minimum lot size when they bring it into us, then that information in terms of. Minimum lot size of two acres, okay, so they fill out an application to request a zoning change. And they identify in there that they don't meet the two acres. Then I guess what, what would have to happen at that point, and tell me if I'm now misinterpreting this, but. We would make the determination that, okay, you don't meet the minimum lot size. What evidence do you have that, that all the rest of these requirements can be met? That has to be.
That's if it's a change.
Pardon?
That comes to us when they're asking for the change.
That's what I'm just suddenly, yeah, thinking that through. If they can't meet the minimum lot size, we'll point that out during the hearing or before the hearing.
Yeah.
So that then would come to us. And then we, we would say. This, you have to provide this evidence and that will be reviewed and approved by the zoning inspector. Because he would approve it before he would issue that, but he can't approve it if he did, if the. Thank you, Louis, for pointing this out because the zoning inspector won't ever get it if we don't. Um, recommend approval and have it go to the trustees.
Unless there's an existing C one lot that is less than two acres.
Well, there are. There's a lot of them out there.
So in that case, if, if there are, and that, and that property owner wants to. I mean, they're, they're gonna use their C one zoning for whatever it is that they want to do.
Yeah.
They may have to get a building permit, they may have to get some sort of permit to do something, but. If they're less than two acres now and they're already C one, the zoning inspector is not gonna.
And maybe that's why we have that language in there at all, is that.
Not gonna deny it, you say they're not.
But I don't think. Yeah, the ones that are already out there.
I, I don't think that's the scenario. I, I don't think it's existing C one.
Right, right.
Someone who has a small parcel in the village and wants to make it neighborhood commercial or neighborhood.
Right. That's under different zoning. They can do that. They wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily do C one for that or C two.
But let's say they come, they.
But you're right, there could be a lot somewhere.
They come to us. Yeah, if they come to us, I want to rezone a non-conforming FR one lot. To C one, so I can put a, whatever.
I think, you know, there's, there's some other lots that are close to the center of village area here that are less than two acres. But more than one acre. Because we used to have zoning.
It was.
That was one acre, for instance, once we, when it was initially put in place. So there were a lot of lots created that were one acre.
So that would come to us as a rezoning application.
That would.
And it would be. Our responsibility or, or our, our would be our, our authority to say it's less than two acres. But it will meet all of the. Building size setback, parking, et cetera, requirements.
And we would ask them to present that evidence to us. We, according to, before we would approve the zoning, we could certainly request that and require it.
Yeah, so then they should say to the zoning commission and not. To the zoning inspector.
That doesn't say anything right now. It just assumes.
Just says it has to be provided.
Yeah, all these development standards has to be provided to be, to get their zoning changed anyway.
Or just leave it out. Yeah, let's, let's, let's not. I don't think we need to put who it goes to.
No, I mean, all these development standards are gonna have to come to the zoning commission. When they make a change.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Um, so we have, we have the change in wording. In twelve oh six.
On twelve, okay.
And then under twelve oh six N, we're gonna add. The noise requirement from fourteen.
Yep.
Fourteen oh six N.
Fourteen oh six.
All right, so we're gonna add in. And it's coming from.
Fourteen oh sixteen.
It's on page, well, it is paginated now, it's page fifteen. So it's same, it's at the end of, of fourteen, we move the same language over here, so it will be noise.
Yes.
Uh, that's the heading, yes.
It even has a red underline for some strange reason. Well, it didn't have, it wasn't underlined. It wasn't underlined before, so somebody. It, it should.
Did we have, I can't remember specifically, did we have discussion about, well, for, uh, office district? Noise was not an issue?
The reason we added noise was because we were allowing outdoor.
Outdoor panels, yeah.
But I think it's perfectly fine to state the same thing.
And I just happened to think in some instances. A business, an office, will have an outdoor patio for employees.
Or a table.
Yeah, so they could become noisy, but during the office hours, it's fine.
Yeah.
Because I think the, the noise, the way that's stated is it's. Does it say?
One times.
You should, see, outside the hours of operation. So during the hours of operation, the, uh, employees could get noisy.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's make sure, we, let's do twelve and make sure that we've got them all now. Because this again is going to have to come back. It has, we, we need to make sure that when it goes to the trustees, that it's the document that we want, and since we're. Not seeing it tonight, we'll, uh, I'll bring that up as another question. Later, but, uh, for Article twelve. No changes on page, the first page, next, the, the sections twelve oh one through twelve oh four. No change on page, the next page, which is twelve oh four, sections A, B, and C. And section twelve oh five, A through F, no changes. Section twelve oh six. First change is in B, lot size. It's now set up to read a minimum lot size of two acres is required unless evidence is provided. That all requirements, then that. Setbacks, building size, parking, waste treatment can be met. All right, and the last change then, uh, is to add in at the bottom of the page. Noise, which is the same language that will be pulled from, um, Article fourteen.
Oh, six N.
And, and what is the number on that? Is it, I don't know, it's twelve, it's not twelve oh six.
Fourteen oh six.
Fourteen oh six N, yeah. Same language. Here we go. That's twelve. Is everyone satisfied that we've got twelve the way that we want it now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Don't even say.
No, we're gonna do a motion to both of them at the same time, yeah. Um, but I just wanna say, okay, we've set twelve aside, we're not coming back to it.
Right.
Fourteen. The changes at fourteen.
Real quick while we count us.
To vote quickly.
Alan, get up here.
All right, you go fourteen, neighborhood, uh, commercial district. First change, we're inserting the word district between commercial and C two.
Yep.
So that we're consistent. No other changes on that page. And going on to the next page, sections fourteen oh four. Through fourteen oh five, A and B, no changes.
Correct.
The next page, uh, no changes in C, D, E, and F at the top, starting with section fourteen oh six. We're changing B to read the same, and it now will read a minimum lot size of two acres is required. Unless evidence is provided that all requirements, setbacks, building size, parking, and waste treatment. Uh, can be met. No more changes on that page, the last page. Um, there are no changes except. Noise has a red line under it, but that'll be.
It will be underlined.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's it. Everyone in agreement?
Correct.
All right. At this point now, I'm going to open the hearing for public comment. We have no members present in the room with us tonight, anyone online? Bob is still there? I can't see it.
I did have a quick question.
Bob, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a quick question on the can be met. You would have to approve it correctly.
Gray screen, so I'm not, I'm not sure if he's there or not.
I'll try again.
Mike, can you hear me?
Oh, now we can.
All right, sorry. Um, getting back to the can be met. You would have to approve the final version. Which would include those conditions, correct? The board would?
Yes, in, in the development plan.
Okay, so, so they have to, they will be met, actually. Okay.
Oh, so you're saying instead of can be met, you're saying will be met?
Well, if you didn't have to prove it.
At the time that they're submitting a plan, they just had to demonstrate that all of the other requirements can be met. By the lot characteristics, the size, the this, the that, that would be part of their plan.
Yeah.
They're not submitting a plan to us specifically. When they, when they go for a straight zoning district like this. They would get the zoning. The only reason we would be asking to see information relating to that. Issue that we've identified is because we're making an exception from the two acres.
They may not need to submit a, a plan, but they do need to state that they will be meeting these standards.
Right. We have to be sure.
Including like the lighting has to be directed and stuff like that.
They would, they would, if they're gonna submit the zoning change, they're probably also gonna submit. A site plan that shows the structure.
Yes.
And, and, and that has the setbacks, because that's what the setback.
That's what we're looking for.
Whether it's a proposed structure or an existing structure, they're gonna have to submit as part of that zoning change. Stuff, evidence that proves that, that these requirements can be met.
That may be correct.
And as part of getting that building permit, they would have to fulfill those.
They would have to submit that to the two, they would have to submit it for approval.
Yeah.
By the zoning inspector, but we're asking to see that, that portion, not. Uh, regarding the setbacks, whatever, the four items that are listed. So that there's, there's evidence that they can meet the requirement if their lot is less than two acres.
So, so Bob, does that satisfy your comment?
Yeah, because it, they do have to actually conform, not that they just can conform. For them to get that permit, they have to conform.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thanks for asking. If there's no further, uh, comments from the public, then we'll close the public portion. Bob, anything else? Because you're the only one out there.
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, then the public portion of this hearing is closed. And back to the zoning commission for any further discussion. We've identified the specific changes that. We want to see made in Article twelve, in Article fourteen. And we will ask Scott to make those revisions and submit a revised copy. Right away, so that that copy will go to the trustees. For the trustees to, uh, deal with, based upon whatever recommendation now we choose to make. At this point, unless there's further discussion, I, I would see a motion as being appropriate.
Mister Chairman, inasmuch as application HTZC, uh, twenty five oh five. Conforms to the intent of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan, appears to meet applicable aspects of the Harlem Township Zoning Resolution. A move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees. Said application with the changes listed tonight be approved.
Thank you, Joanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Brittany, thank you. Seconded by Brittany. Further discussion. Alan, you have anything? I've seen your head, nodded your head several times, so I know that you were paying attention. No further comments, no further questions, all right. Uh, since we have a motion to approve properly second, then, Mr. Riba, would you call the roll, please?
Chandler.
Hi.
Do you have any mention?
Hi.
Tom Need?
All right.
Brittany Hopper?
Hi.
Lou Greenwell.
All right.
Very good. The, uh, motion to approve application HTZ twenty five oh five is approved. And it will be recommended to the. Trustees. trustees for them to take appropriate action. And I'm gonna fill in the form here. My name.
And I will ask Ashley, after the trustees meeting, if they approve it, uh, could you make a, a hard copy with the proper pagination for all of our booklets or zoning resolutions?
Sure, man.
Thank you.
Do we have to wait till that's up? We have to wait till that?
Yeah, thirty days after they approve.
Actually, you got another copy that'll go in here then with those changes. I know, there's already four in here.
Got a copy for the next copy, I got you.
I know.
It's actually one of the thinner of the copies.
It is a thinner one, you're right, in that regard.
I was surprised when I picked it up. This is like a third of the size of most of my packets.
Well, for the record, uh, we have recommended, recommended this for, to the zoning, I'm sorry, from the zoning commission to the trustees for their approval. And that will, action will take place at some point in the future. Uh, most likely, they will receive this application at their regular meeting this month instead of hearing date uh, within thirty days following that. And once they take action, then thirty days after their action, it will become effective unless there is a referendum request filed by public. So at this point, we're looking at probably July for this to eventually become effective, assuming there is no referendum. Okay. Did that sign form get passed? Okay, I was gonna put it back in here, but I'll put this in your folder. You got everything else back.
Yep.
And you can pass this folder on over to Ashley. That's what she's keeping everything in for. All right, thank you. Uh, at this point, we've concluded the hearing and a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Johnny to adjourn the hearing on HTZ C twenty five oh five, seconded by Brittany, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, uh, favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the motion is carried, we are adjourned, the hearing is adjourned. And we will go back into our regular meeting at this point. The regular meeting. Uh, we ended the hearing at eight twenty-two. Um, the other items on the agenda uh, under new business, revision of the application for amendment of the township zoning map, you have uh, a revised version in your packet that mostly distributed. There weren't too many changes. I initially drafted some changes and then I submitted that to Louis and he reviewed them as well. Uh, and Louis, I want you to certainly join in the discussion here that we're going to have. I went through and looked at the application after I sat down with with Ashley. We've made all these changes, so what you have, doesn't say draft on it anywhere, but you've got a draft uh, of the revised version. If you look at the first paragraph, there were changes in that first paragraph so that it now will match our current practices with regard to how we publish notices of, of an application in a hearing. There are no changes in the section for, uh, name of the owner, that section. No changes in the property legal description and no changes for the property owners. If I have any questions about the changes for, in that first paragraph, that look okay to everybody?
That's the only change? The first paragraph, that's the only change?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Trying to keep it simple.
And, and that's only because the prosecutor's office said that we can't just restrict it to the first meeting of the month.
That is correct.
Accept them at any meeting we have.
Basically, that's the view.
Okay.
That anytime we have a scheduled meeting, uh, once we publicize that we're having a meeting, someone can walk in and present it because we have been having some special meetings, we could probably request, because the prosecutors had indicated to me that you could ask the applicant to say if, if you know about it ahead of time, say, well, instead of bringing it in at the meeting, the special meeting they're having on uh, the twenty-eighth, could you plan to bring it in at the first meeting in uh, July instead of bringing it in at the end of June? That would be certainly permissible to do it that way. But if they show up with an application to submit, we accept it.
That, that almost guarantees that we will have to have another special meeting. Right?
No, not necessarily, we could, depending upon the timeframe, you got twenty to forty days to hold the hearing.
Okay.
Once you receive it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if it's less than twenty days before um, we would have a regular meeting, then you end up having to schedule something, you're right.
Okay.
As if, if we had a rate, even we have a rate now, thinking wrong, I'm thinking about Tuesday, but that would be at the beginning of the month, so it still would work out fine.
So. Are we gonna assign a document number to this?
What, uh, did we have one before? We had HTZ C something, I think.
It should probably be the same one.
But question about, it looks like the, the note at the bottom, was that maybe adjusted to? And.
Yeah, I haven't got that far, but yes.
Oh, okay, we're still, I got it.
I haven't got down to the bottom of the page, you're correct.
Okay.
Property owners, no changes, okay? Now, going to the bottom of the page, yes, there are changes there. And some additional changes are not necessary on this form, but the procedural guidelines will need to be revised. Because they will need to reflect our current zoning. They don't currently.
What do you mean?
Because we're gonna use this form for, uh, any district. Planned district as well as street district. But not the overlay districts. It's a separate application form for the overlay. The reason I say that is, in the procedural guidelines, it specifies kinds of things that need to be submitted in terms of development plan. Okay, that's now in Article twenty-three. So the procedural guidelines should basically just be revised to make reference to Article twenty-three and take out, uh, the language that's there.
No, Virginia worked so hard on this.
Yeah, because Article twenty-three specifies the we adopted that. So if it's a planned district, they need to follow Article twenty-three now. That went into effect in February. Article twenty-three. So that would be the change in the procedural guidelines. We don't have to get into any details about that specifically at this point, but I'm just pointing out that it would need to be changed. The.
My question for this bottom note here
Yeah.
is, is it now implies that if a person comes in with a check, they don't have to have two different checks? It only says that when applicants submit payments online, two payments are required.
I don't think checks are, we don't.
You don't take checks anymore?
Anymore. Everything has to be online.
So, if someone's going to submit an application, they have to pay for it online.
Okay.
That's the requirement.
I also wanna call out, it says Harlem Township twenty twenty-five schedule of zoning fees, why do we put a year in there? Shouldn't we just put current, you know, Harlem Township schedule of zoning fees, otherwise every year we're gonna have to change this document?
It could.
I suggest.
It certainly could be changed to say current or say approved. Which.
I, I like, I like the word current.
Current.
So.
So change twenty, twenty twenty-five to just say current.
No, 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 oh, yeah, you can put it there. I was gonna say to the current Harlem Township schedule of.
Res zoning application to the Harlem Township current schedule of zoning fees, doesn't the word current work, okay.
Current before Harlem Township.
But current before Harlem Township. And it would not be capitalized.
Sure.
That all makes sense to everybody now. And this then would, I mean, Louis, this is looking okay to you at this point?
Well, um, we'll go back up in the document where it says net acreage to be rezoned, and I've made a note to myself that says still required? Question mark text removed. Um, and I don't know where that text was removed from, do we still need net acreage? For any of our.
I think it was only removed from one of them.
I think it was removed from AR one. But not from FR one.
So that's. I know. No, it's a good, good question, I thought of that too.
We would only need net acreage if someone is
changing from AR one to F one.
AR to FR. Or if someone is rezoning part of a lot. But from, still from AR to FR. Probably.
Think so.
Yeah, I mean, there'd be no reason to rezone from AR to AR.
All right.
Or AR to something else other than FR. This, that's the only time that it would.
The net acreage, if they've got a hundred acre of property
Yeah.
and they wanna zone a five acre lot, then they have to identify the net acreage relating to that. In other words, they'd have a gross acreage of more than five in order to get a net acreage of minimum of five. That would be, right now, the requirement because we left the word net in there.
All right.
Whether that was accidental or not, I, I thought we had taken it out.
No, we, we talked about that a lot.
AR has gross, FR has net.
Yeah. And that will probably change as soon as sewers come in and.
So what should it say, net acreage if applicable? Is that what you need to talk about?
That's kind of what I was getting at, is it's not, we're not gonna have net acreage on every application.
No. You wouldn't necessarily have to have that acreage on every application.
So if.
But for the majority of what we see is AR to FR. Right now, anyway, so.
I mean, if it's not applicable.
It's not, it's not wrong to leave it on there, and if somebody fills it out, then they fill it out.
Yeah, we had discussion about it, but apparently we, we, it's still in there.
Okay, so now back down to the bottom where it says when the applicant submit, applicant submits payments online. You just said that we only take payments online, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've even.
So if they.
We got the language in here that says excluding all recorded easements and road rights of way. I thought we had delim- eliminated the recorded easements from that.
Which you on, from AR or FR?
It's gotta be FR.
Yeah, this is eight. Farm residential. It's in eight oh six.
I don't wanna get back into talking about FR.
No, no, but the, the problem potentially is, it has to do with the, the net acreage.
Not really a problem, they don't want it, they fill it out, then.
If they fill it out, they fill it out, it's just the application.
I don't know, that's what I
Yeah.
Kinda reached that conclusion.
We'll, we'll look at it if we need to, if we don't need it, we'll just.
They may ask the question.
We won't pay attention to.
What it is, but if they're looking at uh, just taking five acres out, the net acreage isn't a requirement.
Yeah. Okay, so back, back on this, the note down at the bottom about when the applicant when the applicant submits payments online, if, if that's the only way that we're taking payments, shouldn't we say all payments must be submitted online?
Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Two payments and two payments are required, one, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I think the biggest part of us putting online on there was that this is a newer people ha- that have, you know, come in and buy applications and before that are coming in again and might think that you can do checks, so I think that was really the only reason we felt I should say online, so the wording can always change.
I like what you said, Joey, like. Find those two, all at, you know, all payments must be submitted online and two payments are required, such and such.
Yeah, I think that would make sense to change. Since it is a requirement now, it's not that was a requirement set by the treasurer and the trustees, not by us.
Help me out, catch me up, when does the payment due? Used to be you came in, you had a check with you.
Correct.
But if you have, walk in and you apply, you can't do the online before you come in or do the online after.
They should do it before they come in and have the receipt in the packet.
That's.
That should be.
That should be. Yeah, that's a good point.
I get that.
If they have to submit payment with the application with a check before, they should have, when you pay on our online system, it gives you a receipt at the end, you can print that out.
We should say that it must be.
Yeah.
The receipt must come in with the packet.
So. I mean.
When we work on.
Be setting hearing base if they haven't paid.
Yeah, when we work on revising the procedural guidelines, we'll also address it there.
But her point of attaching the receipt.
But I think it should be, I mean, I think we can put a statement on here, if we can make it short enough.
So all payments must be submitted online prior to submission of application.
The receipt.
Yeah. Let's see, that would work. Check. All payments. Did you say must?
Brittany, what was that wording? It said all payments must be submitted online prior to or it shouldn't, I don't know if submitted is the right word, all payments must be made online? That prior to submitting the application?
All payments must be made online prior. Compared to submitting. Did you say prior to submitting?
Yeah.
Prior to submitting.
And I guess you could put, put something about require, like, making them put the.
Receipt shall be re, shall be included.
Yeah. Well, we gotta leave the sta- the statement, two payments are required.
Yeah, those are all those other statements.
One payment will cover the application base fee, the second payment will cover the application acreage fee.
And I think you can say at that point, at the, at a receipt.
Yeah, that's just what I was thinking too.
I think you could ma- yeah, you could make it like two payments are required, then like a quote.
Right. Okay. Well, Ashley, you and I will work and get that these revisions paid. If we have time, maybe we can get it done and get it back to them next week. And then also, I will meet with Ashley, we'll review the procedures. And get a draft of that done, I don't know if we'll, if we'll have the. And get a draft of that done, I don't know if we'll, if we'll have the opportunity to get that done before meeting next week or not, but. Okay. Yeah, good, and I'll come in, see if we can do that, get you a draft. We won't necessarily spend time reviewing it next week, but if we get you the draft, then we can expect to review it at our first meeting in June.
Say, I can put it on the shared documents, so everybody can go by.
That's a good idea. It's on the SharePoint.
Mm-huh.
File. Once we put it up there, okay?
Where on the website is the online payment?
Uh, if you go, the, we're about to. Change some stuff on the website, but right now, I always tell everybody the easiest thing. Is to go just on the main page and then applications and forms, and it's the first button on there. Just the easiest way to get to make a payment.
Okay.
If you're on the main page, and then scroll down a little bit, and you see all those colorful little blocks. It's like application, the forms, all the notices, trustees. So if you do applications, or if you click on. Facilities, there's also a make a payment button there for tools.
Well, I found out why I made that comment about net acreage. In the revisions that you guys made to the procedural guidelines, what used to be item number three. Had this whole discussion about um, survey must include detailed calculation of net acreage, all this other stuff. And that you took, you got rid of that. In the version that you edited, so there's no longer a discussion about net acreage. Being a requirement at all. So I thought, oh, maybe we've gotten rid of that completely, but it sounds like we still kept it.
We still have it in the zoning.
So if we still have it for, then this, this item three, instead of it being stricken completely, it should say for, for F R one. The survey best included blah, blah, blah. Like, we should still keep that then for at least that one zoning type.
Feel like zoning to F R one, you're still required to.
That. He's referring to the procedural guidelines, and. That'll be something that, that uh. We will work on, I have, you, thank you for pointing that out, because I was deleting it. At a time when we were having a discussion about taking the net acreage out. Of everything, but then it's still there.
What you guys marked up.
Yeah, yeah.
And so now I've just made a note to add it back in for F R.
Well, I've got that copy, so when I sit down with uh, with Ashley. We'll put some wording in there to keep some discussion about. Uh, calculating the net acreage or F R one, that's only applicable for F R one.
Uh huh.
Right. That acreage is not applicable to anything else.
Right.
None of the other zoning districts, only F R one. Okay. So we'll get this revised and get it back to you, and then we'll get you uh, a draft of revisions in the procedures, then the other item. Um. We will have to do a revision on the uh. Application for. Plan districts, but right now, we don't. The, the application that we have. It's pretty simple, and it it can stay that way. But I think in terms of uh. Again. The language in um, or plan district. They're specific. They have to go to what the requirements are in terms of the plan districts.
Uh huh.
And utilize the. Procedures that are specified. In our, in our newly adopted standards, so. I don't know how soon we're gonna see a plan district coming forward, but uh, let's get this one done and the procedural guidelines for it. And then we'll come back to deal with the plan districts separately. I'm sorry, not the plan districts, the overlay district.
We have planned districts coming up with NEF and.
We do.
The capatio.
Right. And that's why if we go it, they will just have one application form. But that application for would be used for the planned districts. That's, and for right now, we don't have anyone that is looking to submit an application. For planned, planned a district, nor do we have anyone looking to submit an application, overlay district.
And and should we be more clear in our application, it just says overlay district application, should we, should we? Name that so that people know that.
That's the way the current form exists, it does say overlay application on it.
Right, but should it also say planned district? Or so that people know that overlay district and planned district, they could use the same application?
Or not? Okay, they will use different applications.
So we'll have to create a different app, create an.
We already have.
For planned districts.
Not for planned district, we have an application for an overlay district.
Weren't we just talking about a. Application for a planned district?
That's this one.
Oh, we use this one.
That's that one.
As a plan.
It's the same one.
Application for amendment of township zoning map?
Right.
Yeah, that's a planned district.
You use this application if you're gonna submit it, so the request would be. Current zoning district. A R ones, F R ones, proposed zoning district.
So, so maybe in our procedures.
P I D.
Maybe we just, we spell out for these zoning districts use this application. For these, for these other zoning districts, like overlay districts, use. The other application, maybe in our procedures, we spell that out, so people know which application to fill out, depending on which zoning they're working with.
When they're submitting an application for an overlay district, they're not submitting a request to amend the township zoning map. That's the difference.
Correct, yeah.
If it's not an overlay, it uses this one for everything else.
Yeah, for everything that's not an overlay.
It's not an overlay, this application's used for everything, but maybe. In terms of, as we look at what we put in the wording in the, in the procedural guidelines. We may need to put some language in there to address that, so it does. It's confusing.
So people know which application to fill out.
And but, you know, it's confusing to us sometimes, well, think how confusing it is to, to the naive, um, naive, naive person out there.
Right, exactly.
That doesn't come in and sit in these meetings every month.
But should.
Alright, thanks. Alright. We'll get those done and get you a draft as soon as possible, and I know you'll have a draft of this by next week.
I am sending everybody. That, the procedure, procedural guidelines and. That form, the application form you just went over, it does not have the edits that we talked about tonight, just so you know, I was just sending it to everybody so that I can start working off of that, so you can.
The procedural guidelines. That you're sending have no changes in.
No changes, I'm just putting it so that you guys can see what we work on. While we're working, so it's not coming to edit.
Uh huh.
I want you to see the original.
Okay.
So ignore it for now, cause there's nothing different to it.
The procedural guidelines are what is currently on our township website.
Yeah, right.
So that. Will be hopefully changed as soon as we can get it changed. Uh, so that people aren't confused, if they follow the procedural guidelines that are out there now. They're not correct. So maybe we'll. We need to get it revised as soon as we can. But most people don't seem to pay any attention to what's on. Hate to say that, but that seems to be what happens.
Well, they come in and talk to Mike or.
Yeah. And then they come in and talk to us.
Yeah.
But we'll get. We had some uh, a staff person that could access his time doing that, but Ashley does, can't do that, that's.
Yeah.
Not, can't expect Ashley to be doing that. He just doesn't have the time. It's not.
Have no more time for any more calls with.
Right, you're not looking for more.
Aggregation is bogging down my bones.
Okay.
More calls coming into my office.
Can you just record something on it so that if you're, if you're calling about aggreg- aggregation? I just don't.
Phone systems weren't terrible.
So you have been getting lots of calls about that, huh?
Every day I get at least ten to fifteen calls.
Oh my gosh.
And I'm getting messages overnight. People calling on the weekends, I'm getting calls all weekend about.
Do you have a big thing on the front page of the website?
I have links on the Facebook, on the website, on. It, it's everywhere, but like.
You need, you need a recording, if you're calling about aggregation.
It's cool, yeah.
I wish, I tried to change my reporting and it, I think it's still kind of, I don't know, it won't. Phone systems are a whole other situation.
Oh.
Don't you get new ones this year? No?
How, how soon is the phone system gonna get changed, by the way?
Here we go. At this point, it's a nightmare.
Oh.
I also keep getting calls.
Alright, well.
It was supposed to be done by now, and. The engineer hasn't even come to look at our line yet, and now we're being told they might not be compatible, so we'll see. So foreseeable future.
Unforeseeable future.
The unforeseeable future is truly how it feels.
Uh, I have nothing further on the agenda, does anybody have? Anything else you'd like to bring up to the group, otherwise a motion to adjourn would be fine.
Take a motion to adjourn.
And she's smiling.
So moved.
And who's gonna second?
I second.
And Louis seconds, alright, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Unanimous for adjournment, we are adjourned.
Eight fifty-one.